All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome. We've had a lot of people here tonight. It is Wednesday, October 22nd. The time is seven o'clock. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let the role reflect that all members are present with the exception of Lance and Derek. Was this meeting properly notified?
Yes, it was. And as a reminder, it is being livestreamed and recorded.
All right, welcome to all of our visitors. Is there any public comment? All right. First up is highlight on you. We've got service learning, middle school, special education teacher Rhonda Malicek. Welcome, everyone.
All right. This was our third year of doing summer school, um, the service learning portion. When we first, it was actually Jackie's idea to start this three years ago. And I had never taught summer school because it was no interest to me. Until she said, you know, I think we're going to do service learning. Like, if that's the case, sign me up. So, and I still, when I wake up in the morning on a Monday after school, so I'm like, why did I do this? Until I get there and I see the energy that these kids bring and they are rolling out of bed early. When they all, the rest of their friends are probably sleeping in, playing video games or whatever. And they work their little tails off. So we're just going to showcase a little bit of what we've done this last summer. A lot of it is repeat from summer to summer, although not all. As you all know, we probably saw on social media, we did some work for John Hugh when he was not feeling well. It's really been a nice variety of things, but I'm going to let the kids do most of the talking here. Very casual. The first thing though, you guys are familiar with the Sore Farm in New Richmond that the district runs. They, they have some agreement with, yeah, so they actually raise their own beef for their lunches. So we, that was our first stop. Both the last three years, actually, and they love our workers. Every year, the teacher that leads it is like, can you come back with your kids? Because they're hard workers. So that's our first stop. And there's a little information on here, but I'm not going to bore you with that. But they do, they have seventeen head of beef every year. And they rotate those out every year. So we see these cute little cows. She warns the kids what they're going to be a year from them, from when they're haltering them. So, it's, it's a really neat experience and whole thing, you're two of us.
Well, sadly for all of you folks, you have seen my ugly mug at first. I know. Shame. Stop the paying jokes around my baseball for coffee. No, I've got it there. As you can see here, well, Sore was definitely a fun experience if you personally ask me. Except for the goat poo. That was not a fun experience and I would like to not relive that. I prefer the ducks. The ducks were fun. But I did get to pet goats as you've seen the picture. But now, as we're moving on, well, I was working ducks, goats, chickens. There was a cat there that I got to pet one time. That was fun. But as you can see, this is mostly about, well, I don't know what the goats have been there for, I'll be honest. But I'm going to stop randomly off for five seconds, I hope. But goats, they're there. I don't know what for. I still know it. Chickens, eggs, chicken. Take a guess what they're used for. You all, you people are smart. I know that for a fact. You guys work here for a living. Take a guess. God, I can't stop buttering up to people. And no, I'm not sorry. Well, I first did, well, with the chickens. I, well, we finished with Betty because it was getting old, crusty and, in fact, very dusty. Yes, they intend for that to arrive. But it was very dusty. There's, we had to clean it out so chickens don't die of inhaling sawdust. Most people die of inhaling sawdust, for my information. And we also had to clean out of goat poo by wheelbarrows and pitchforks. We also had to clean out water bowls, things like that. Experiences that were not very fun, yes. But hey, it's necessary. It has to be done. Let's go out and be cows, which are absolutely adorable. If not the most stubborn creatures alive, you know the picture of the goats that make me feel bad thoughts. Blame the poo. I did it. I only did it because I was forced. There was nothing else to do. I barely spent time with the ducks. They were, they were nice. It also smelled. It just smelled bad. I don't hate goats, okay?
This was going to be, this next one, I believe, was a grand race. But she isn't here. She isn't here. Billy, you did the food drive with us. Do you want to talk about what our preparation was for that?
So our preparation for the food drive was to get grocery bags and then put flyers about what we were collecting, which was cereal wrappers and noodles. And then we went around to Hammond and Roberts and putting them on your handles.
All right, so. All right, so we went to the Hammond Park and we spread wood chips for a long time. And we stayed in a lot of tables and it was pretty fun.
Billy's really appreciative of our help. The next one was a competing people in. Yep, there was, so then we did the same thing. We did a ham and we took all the kids up in vans this time and running walk, obviously. And headed in different directions in Robert's and distributed the bags as well. So the kids got a lot of steps in on this base. All right, the next one. Yeah, we're back to sore. Cyrus, this is yours.
We got the halter cows to break them. And they were really stubborn. Because they got to get used to being moved around.
All day, the sixth day, we went to the Hammond Nursing Home. We did a lot of landscaping, pulling weeds, reading Mulch, all that. It's probably needed weeks now.
What was your name?
It was quite dirty. And then after we were done with all that, we went inside and played with the residents. I don't know if you've heard of multiple kids.
Kids really enjoyed it. It's fun to see their personalities come out a little differently than you would imagine. Like, some of them that I thought would be like very comfortable, a little more sand offish. The ones that I thought it would be a challenge were the ones that just filled in with nonsense. The residents, as you all know, just being able to see kids. So it's, it's such a good event. Right?
Like I was saying earlier, on the ninth day, we ran back to Hammond and split up into three different vans. And then we went to the houses that we put the bags. And then we saw if there was a bag of grocery bags of either noodles or cereal. One of us would run out of the van and collect the noodles and then bring it back into a big box into the van. And then on day ten, we went to feed my starving children, Albinera Soda. This organization helps kids without good nutrients get good nutrients for their bodies. And I am so thankful that we got to get this experience. We've had thirteen thousand, thirteen thousand, seven hundred fifty-two meals and we've had eighty-seven kids for a whole entire year.
Last food very much these kids will be again. Shame, I know. But we did the Roberts food pickup because, well, we have to. I didn't have a choice.
Just, just for your improvement.
Well, just so you know, all of this, we all agree to this. This is not child labor. If it was, you'd be complicit in it and we would sue you. Thank you. I'd let you know that. So, yeah, we all are complicit in this together. Don't worry, we're all going to jail as well. Trust us. We've all did bad things. But as I said, we did the Roberts pickup. It's basically what we did in Hammond. Take a guess. Nothing hard. Now, day twelve. The final day, which also gets to do with me as your host today. Pleasure to meet you. This will be my final day here. I gotta stop procrastinating. Anyway, we dropped off some food at the church with three hundred two pounds of donations, which, as you could guess, is a lot. It's like three middle school students combined. It's a lot. Don't think of cannibalism. That's already too many books as it is. Lot of cereal, lot of pasta. For some reason, I found tuna in there. There's, how did they get tuna? There's no meat products anywhere in there. Anyway, we dropped off the church and for some reason, my neighbors weren't there, which not bad. They're nice people. Please say hi to them. They deserve it. But yeah, that was the end of it, which is a shame. This is really fun. And also, yeah, it was just fun. Please continue supporting me this, otherwise I left nothing else better to do for the summer. I was incredibly bored without this. Please, I beg of you. I don't ask for much. You've had, if not anything at all, I beg.
Yeah, and I will say there's a lot of repeats. Like Jackson came back every summer that he could. And I wasn't sure he would.
He has like still jokes, Phil.
Yeah, and, and part, one of the best rewards probably is going out in the community and seeing the parents and then coming up saying thank you for teaching them some of the stuff that we just don't have the opportunity to teach our kids. It's that we don't have farms to just take the hell and one kid didn't know how to turn on the hydrant. And so just go turn the hydrant on. And they're just kind of looking like, you know, they've been like a fire hydrant like that. You took a hose to it. I know, and they go up to him and say, what do I do? And they pull the handle. And they're like, where's the handle? So it's just that Iowa farm girl thing. I'm just like, you assume they know and don't. So how to run, use a pitchfork and a lot of that stuff. And Bailey's nonstop me at Target this summer and said that she actually got her little sister out and without even being prompted and helped pull weeds. So that's the kind of stuff that makes it really important. So, do you guys have any questions? One happy thing we did get to, we did have a couple of days of fun. After the work, we went to Culvers and Amy Gaffner's dad owns the one in Richmond. So I tapped into him and he was able to give all the kids a swoopy. So they all got a custard. And then on our last day to see our, feed my starving children, we made it a longer day and we stopped them from burying the deer. It's just kind of last for all. So showing appreciation for these hard workers.
Thank you. All right, comments by board members and superintendents. The third Friday count update.
So the official third Friday count this year is one thousand five hundred seventy-nine students in seats. And as compared to one thousand six hundred four last year, so we are less twenty-five students. And at twelve thousand, three hundred and fifty per student in the revenue limit worksheet, that's three hundred and eight thousand dollars. Again, you'll, you'll see later in administrative report in our enrollment summary. Again, mostly attributed to the graduating senior class is larger than the kindergarten class we bring in the following year. For example, last year, one hundred nineteen seniors, the last day of school. And we brought in ninety-three kindergarteners this year. So that's twenty-six there. So with twenty-five difference, pretty much attributes that. Yeah, there's some other things, but that is mostly attributed to that. Birth rates in the county and less students in our county across the state. I think there's seventy-some percent of our school districts in the state are declining enrollment. But we'll get to that later too with, with Chen's report. Then concurrently to, we're having Hazel Reinhardt do our population study again. We do that about every three years. So that, looking forward to getting the results of that and digging deeper into that with, with available lots and housing and, and things like that. They're current, she's currently doing it. Yeah, it takes a couple of months.
Thank you. And next up is board appreciation scorns. It was last Wednesday. Brad and I, were you at the elementary schools? Brad was at the high school. I was at middle school. It was like one of the best days I've had, you know, here. It was, it was so much fun to be back in the buildings and visiting with the staff and just I had, just, I really enjoyed that morning so much.
Yeah, it's always a good experience, just a small bug.
A lot of the faces that I see at the elementary school, I've never met before. So it's nice to meet new people.
So next up is WASB Fall Regional Meeting, October twenty-eighth. And I think Nate, were you, did you say you could go or you couldn't? Okay, no. So, and I can't go. So Dave and Jeff and Tim.
I can drive. You bet. Yeah, we'll, we'll communicate. Probably meet. Well, I guess I can't go then.
So that's in Eau Claire and I believe it starts at six. So.
Some Calio register stress.
And then we should talk about the board development meeting date. Tim reached out to Lee and the only date that he had opened in November was a Sunday.
Sunday the night.
Didn't work for at least two people. And so I guess we need to decide the next one will be like February fifteenth or sixteenth. So with the holidays and hunting and everything going on, we need to just discuss if we're going to skip this one or thoughts about what. So then you just put on the calendar. I think it's the weekend after a Super Bowl. So February.
Did you say that it was a Sunday or Monday?
The February one will be a Sunday.
Fifteenth.
Hopefully we can get everybody there.
Five to nine.
And we were with admin last time.
Yeah, we've got twice per year, so August and February.
Scheduled presentations by guests and staff members. The health insurance update, employee benefits consultant with the Alara Group, Alicia Schwartz. Welcome, Alicia. Thanks for coming. We can move that up.
And then the podium adjusts as well, if you'd like, with that little button by your right hand.
Not going to be nearly as exciting as the kid up there. That was so cute. Well, I'm here today just to give you guys an update. Stay with the state, just talk a little bit about how things are going in the plan and some things like that. So let's jump right in here. This first slide, I think it's just a really good level set. This is what we refer to as our benefit philosophy statement. And we help our clients kind of develop these benefits philosophies in the effort to remember why we're talking about the employee benefits, total rewards in general. So we care for employees' health and well-being, and businesses does, and attracting and retaining talent. And I always think it's good to bring that to the board too, because it's up to, to make those decisions. It just kind of keeps like what we're looking for is. And it's a tool that is used to recruit and retain. It is also part of our commitment to take care of people and things, right? To be the best they can be at work. So outside of that, we're going to just dig into some of the employee benefit overview, just what you have. I wanted to talk a little bit about the state of the healthcare market. So just to kind of set the stage, your plan currently, you guys offer two different plans. You have a core plan and a buy down plan. So the core plan includes a seventy percent employer contribution. The district pays seventy percent of premium. They also offer a district HSA contribution. And that plan is a little bit more rich than the other plan. So that just means that if you want to contribute some of your own dollars towards a benefit plan, you're deductible, you two thousand if you're single, or four thousand if you're a family. The buy down plan is a strategy that allows people to actually get no cost healthcare insurance. And I would say by far, the, the district of St. Croix-Saintsville in many ways offers a very, very top tier benefit plan, which I would imagine is very helpful in your recruitment and retention strategies. But having a no cost plan is really, really great and will put you in the top tier for sure. So that plan models thirty-five hundred dollar deductible for singles, seven thousand for family. There's also have an increased pay contribution that you're giving to employees to help sliding down. So that net out of pocket is very, very low. And again, top tier benefits in the market, which is of other districts and the plans that they're offering as well. Questions, what we have. All right, so some of the, I would call these ancillary benefits, benefits outside of medical. But typically, medical is the biggest ticket item. It's the highest cost. And we spend a lot of time talking about that. But I think it's just great to have like what other benefits are offered to restricted employees. So you have dental insurance that is a hundred percent paid for by the district. Same with vision insurance, a hundred percent paid for by, by the district for eligible employees. And then you also have life insurance through Mutual of Omaha. That is a term life product, a group life product, means everyone gets at least one term of salary. And then you also have an additional benefit that offers a permanent life insurance solution through your trust card. And that has actually a long-term care rider, which is a really nice benefit to have for employees that are concerned. It also has disability benefits, both short and long-term. And then supplemental benefits we reference as those it's kind of like the ad that commercial, right? If you have something happen, duck shows up with a bunch of money. So if you get in an accident, if you had a critical illness, many hospitals save its cash. It's to kind of help cover those costs. And then there is just a fifth dollar. Access to the HSA savings account, flex spending account, and then an employee assistance program that's specifically meant for helping employees with short-term mental health resolution. And if you have to go, and if you have divorce, if you have a family member, you need some extra support. You have six secondary sessions through the Health Partners EAP program. An additional three sessions with Mutual of Omaha carrier. And there's some changes that will be coming on the Health Partners EAP program. Okay, so let's talk a little bit about, just to say of the healthcare market. I think it's really just important to kind of understand what's happening before we talk about the renewal. Because the renewal came back really great and I think it's really good news. I think it's important to kind of understand what other employers are seeing. This rap, it's really hard to read, but I think, you know, the sentiment is up and to the right. No shock right there, right? So in the last, even in the last ten years, this kind of reflects both cereal premiums for insurance, with insurance as the bottom number, and family premiums as at the top, the lighter blue number. The inflation over time is like four hundred percent, right? In the last ten years, the family committee took from sixteen thousand a year to fourteen thousand a year. Sorry, twenty-four thousand a year. So a really, you know, rapidly growing in, in some cases to employers is very unsustainable. And a lot of times the response to those big increases is you end up having to increase your deductibles to maintain a certain budget that you might have. Or you're taking away HSA contributions, those types of things. So employees are harboring a lot of that increase. There's a lot of things that are contributing to the, the healthcare increases. The first one is just the cost of care, right? The cost to get a replacement, get a loved one, check for the baby. It just keeps going up. In the last four years, it averages at eight to nine percent year-over-year increase in the cost of care. On top of that, we have generally, not surprisingly, health and population. So a lot of chronic conditions, a lot of lifestyle impacted chronic conditions, diabetes. You know, a lot of medications in the market that are part of medical interventions, right? So the older we get, the more medical interventions we need to maintain the health. And the more medical interventions we have, science is advancing really great things that are very high cost drugs to kind of like in their lives, or cure us from diseases, those types of things. And I was also arguing, this one is a little harder to talk about, but healthcare pricing failures, I think is a really, really big problem we kind of set up. So when you think about the cost for an MRI, the cost to get a knee replacement, it is not all the same. Every hospital, every clinic has their same, their different price model and they price things very differently. So you can get an MRI for ten thousand dollars at one place and you go to another place and get it for six hundred. But that's not great numbers. These are like literally accurate data numbers. So those pricing failures cause a really big issue. And so helping employees kind of understand how to be the consumers of healthcare is even what we try to focus on. And the district team that we work with does a really good job of promoting those tools and reminding people of their, we all have a part in the overall healthcare plan and how it's managed. Your way you consume care has a direct result even in the mall, and those two really clear season. So. Same question about that. So one of the things that we do quite frequently, I would say on a quarterly basis, is we're reviewing claim activity for the district and just kind of making sure that we have a good handle on what's happening. And so every year, we all look at some metrics, some of those metrics include things like loss ratio. A loss ratio means for every dollar in premium we pay to your voting share carrier, they pay out X dollars in claims. And so the, the sweet spot of claim ratio to get what I would call a flat rate of zero is about eighty percent. That's the target. They need that twenty percent margin to pay bills and keep the lights on, pay their employees and stuff. So over the last four years, you were averaging in the mid-eighties for loss ratio. This most recent plan year, you were at, you ended at nineteen, which is great. So let's jump to the next slide and we'll dig into the actual. Nope, we're going to talk about, we'll talk about the actual renewal in a couple of slides. But one of the things we also do with this claim activities informs us on areas that we can improve the plan model and how the plan is performing. And a lot of things that we're doing is identifying things that we can do to educate employees. So if you go to the next couple of slides, we came out during the welcome back meetings and shared some information to employees about the power of prevention. And so, of course, the best way to you not use your plan is to be really healthy. And that doesn't mean we don't go to the doctor. It means you actually do go to the doctor and get preventive screenings. Early detection is by and far the best way to stay out of the doctor, right? So we get the breast cancers, colon cancers, cervical cancers, those types of things. So we challenged the district to improve their overall utilization of these services. So this, this slide shows that you have sixty-five percent of eligible members complying with their breast cancer screenings. Fifty-two complying with their cancer screenings and fifty-nine complying with their cervical cancer. Overall preventive use, just like annual physical, all those things, seventy-two percent. So those are great numbers. I would say in the benchmark, you're probably closer to just four oh fifty. In some cases, closer to forty for a population to use those screenings. So you're doing well, but certainly areas for improvement. Okay, now we can talk about them all. So Health Partners initially offered you this year a nine point three five percent renewal. Last year, when you renewed your plan, you agreed to make a two-way agreement with Health Partners that locked your rate in this year to cap out at twelve percent. So what that tells us is that your plan ran a little bit better than worst case scenario. So you got under the cap of nine point three five. So that was a annual increase of about three hundred and twenty-four. In the market right now, we are seeing in the high end of double digits, like double teens, I would say, like nineteen to twenty-nine percent is what we're seeing in the average market. So this is a great rule. I'm very, very pleased. We did go back to Health Partners again and said, hey, will you extend the rate another year? And they agreed and then reduced that down to six and cap. So save your just shy of a hundred thousand dollars. So really quick recap of just the overall planning rules for these little plans. The majority of your plans are in a rate lock until twenty twenty-seven, so we won't see any shifting rates there. The dental one up seventy percent began in the market. Seventy percent is historically higher than we're seeing, but Seventy percent is historically higher than we're seeing, but a lot of our groups are getting, again, like ten to fifteen percent to seven's not too bad based on how many is used. I think that is about it. So changes for twenty twenty-six, just a few items I would mention. So, um, Health Partners is changing some of their programs that are in existence right now, just based on utilization and ramping some of the things that they're doing. So the first one is they're sunsetting what you currently use as your wellness program. So currently, there is wellness, uh, a wellness program that Health Partners manages. And it requires specific participation from employees, like getting new visits, tracking activities, healthy habits, those types of things. Um, and if they comply and meet those targets, their deductible is usually reduced by five. On their deductible is a single, their deductible is reduced by a thousand and a half. So this program has been in play for probably the last fifteen years, um, just the Health Partners in general. And they've decided to kind of sunset that program because there's not that many people with them, players that are using it. They find that gamifying through portals and rewarding people with points and creating that creates a little bit better of engagement. Um, and so this year, they will do the, what they call the Mile Rewards Program. Again, same concept, meaning you're engaging in activities, healthy activities, but you can earn points in exchange for gift cards. Each, uh, member eighteen years or older can get up to two hundred and forty-five dollars a year, which is great. So you, your spouse, college students, those types of things. So that's the wellness program. And then the EAP, there was an additional, uh, benefit in your plan that offered up to twenty visits for any member who had suffered from any anxiety or depressive symptoms. That program is no longer available to Health Partners, but you still have pretty great EAP program, Health Partners. So you get up to six sessions, regular sessions. And then the Mutual of Omaha Plan also covers three sessions, so. Basically, we, we looked at the utilization to see if there was a need to increase those six to higher. And it actually, the utilization from last year was at thirty-six percent, we're counting twenty-four. So we didn't see a need to enhance or change that because we realized it's just pretty low still. Right? Oh, oh my gosh.
I just want to thank you, Alicia, on let the board know, uh, we've worked with the Lara Group, formerly known as J Counter, for many, many years, and it's been a great partnership. And they have, with their work, right, saved us literally, I mean, millions of dollars in negotiation and, and we really appreciate your reports and experience ratings. And we really hit consumerism with our staff a lot, you know, and I think that certainly literally has paid dividends.
I mean, looking at your climate, it works, it's, it's good. And the, the team has been great about engaging with employees and providing education regularly. A lot of times what you see in other employers is that you hit your benefits and education during enrollment. And through that once a year, it just doesn't work. And then you forget about the resources to choose and have your own care and roots months a year. So most of the job communication and if that shows some intent. Good?
Yeah, thank you.
Come on up, Jackie. Okay, we've got the summer school report, uh, middle school assistant principal, Jackie Palmer. Thanks for coming.
Thank you. We'll give a little recap on summer, you know, now that it's fall, it's a bit chilly out. Want to thank the staff that, you know, makes summer school possible because finding staff is harder than having two holders here behind me. And I know he's like, probably, I have to beg him sometimes, twist his arm, but he does an awesome job with the youth. So, um, I have a lot of middle school, um, summer school images. I took a couple of our elementary, but, uh, this was our nutrition class. Um, it was nutrition for our healthy, active lifestyles. And you see Swoz and Ilyas put that on, um, new class. Kids loved it, it was full every hour. Um, and so it's just really neat to see the kids. I mean, she just does a great job engaging them, and it was something that a lot of them were interested in. So, um, that was a new class this year. And this is Ms. Simone's, um, third and fourth grade, I think. She does a first, second, third and fourth grade funnel fitness. Um, we get some high school students that work, um, and then the kids just love to run around and play, so. Um, and then here we go is our indoor-outdoor games of the middle school. And in the bottom right is Mr. Holzer's BFF crew. Um, again, summer school for middle school is different, right? It's trying to find opportunities for them in the summer that, so they're not at home or out of their mind. Um, and also just keep them social, you know, socially and physically fit, um, with their peers and, um. So these are a couple of those photos. Mister, sorry, I was just going to go back. We actually had a teacher from Ellsworth, um, who comes in, he lives in the district, has kids in our district. And he is always reaching out to me before I even get staffing figured out because he really wants to keep coming back and offering this indoor outdoor game. So I'm always happy to have him come, and that's Mr. Foley, so. Um, Miss Swoz and Ilyas, the run club right up her alley. Um, she's, again, the number of kids that just sign up and they run, whether they ran before or not, I did fifth grade through eighth grade. Um, and then at the end, the kids can register for a five K race and they get the pin and they, you know, and all that, like a medal if they want, or they just dress it with red, white and blue theme. Um, so this was the last day. And her mom and dad that live right up the road, they put on this whole big thing. They've got the sprinklers going and they've got icies and water and everything for them. So super fun to, to see that finale at the end, you know, kids that have a run and now they're doing the three point two miles that she's figured out, and it was neat to see, so. There's that crew. It's neat to see the, uh, fit through eighth grade, one of those eighth graders being good buddies and role models, I guess, to the younger, younger kids.
And that's typical, right, that it's fifth and eighth grade, fifth through eighth grade combined.
Yeah, yeah, just because our number of teachers, or the teachers is so limited, so we have to kind of.
I think it's great.
Mix them together and, you know, they become buddies and, you know, for some of those fifth graders, they're more comfortable coming to school come September time, so. Yeah, and now Ms. Joy, if you can ask, reach all those, I mean, I mean, highlight on you, they spoke to that, and it's such an awesome, our service learning is so fun. Um, looking for different things to do, and Rhonda's always open to new ideas. But like she said, Sora's constantly reaching out and making us know that, so. And she organizes that, she just takes it upon herself and has those connections and it's all put out on the calendar and good to go, so. Um, swimming lessons in July, we are still kind of going through swimming lessons with Ellsworth. Um, Mr. Mallar is kind of the one that heads that, him and, um, Amy Rood at elementary. And we take three buses and two from elementary, one from the middle school. We go down there with about a hundred, anywhere from a hundred to a hundred and fifteen kids. Um, and they do their swimming lessons, they have a forty minute, fifty minute chunk of time. Maybe it's not even forty, forty, thirty minute chunk of time. And then the other chunk of time, they're playing on the playground. Um, this year, we experienced some weather issues, so there were a couple of times we had to leave swimming lessons early. Um, kids had to get bused back to the schools and parents were notified so that they could come pick up early. Um, but again, it's just a great opportunity for kids to learn life skill. Um, so, swimming lessons. And then let's have their fun day at the end, you know, so. This is just some things for me, but if you click on the numbers, you know, it's fact, you go through all that, that's very, yeah, let's see. Oh, no, anyway, I can see to it, of course. Yes.
Okay.
It's just, it's all in, all digits. So, um, in June, and obviously, if you can see, um, that's just our summer school, um, elementary school. We had two hundred and thirty-three, which is a little bit down from last year as far as those that registered. Um, middle school is, was up, and so for a total, we have two hundred and fifty-eight kids that are doing summer school from K to eighth grade. Um, which is, it gets to be a lot. And the hard thing, you know, it's, I love the opportunity to provide for the kids. The one stressor is trying to recruit staff, finding certified staff to teach the classes, it's always a challenge. So there's always, um, a lot of support staff that, you know, would like to work, and I love to have them. But unfortunately, they're not able to teach the class. So, um, we may do, we figure it out and we make it work, so. Um, uh, and talk swimming lessons, um, those numbers are up there. Um, the August session was a little different this year. That was more focused on our students with a reading plan. So I know we've talked about the Act Twenty. Um, these are students from first through fourth grade that had an active reading plan. And so I invited probably, I invited everyone with a reading plan, every family got an invite, um, but only twenty, twenty-seven attended, and then we ended up getting a couple others that ended up showing up. So we had thirty-one students who came in for, um, the August session, which was eight days. So it's a good, it's a good number, and, and we'll just see what that looks like. Cause I know going forward, it's not going away. And so it's just what do we offer and how do we offer that reading support throughout the summer, so. Um. Thank you, well, two is there? I think, I think you have to take that soon. Two things that are a little bit different this year. Um, so we offer the strength and conditioning at the middle school and the high school. Um, those numbers stayed pretty consistent. Um, I know you always have four crews. Um, they have a morning session before summer school even starts at six thirty, six twenty-five, um, that goes until about eight. And then, um, the high school has a bunch of offerings for weight, weight room throughout the day, all summer long. So, um, that's always, like I say, consistent. But one of the things that Mr. Diltur had talked about this year was trying to figure out ways to offer, offer opportunities for our high schoolers. So they did a skills class. So if kids wanted to know or to practice more basketball skills or football skills or wrestling or volleyball, um, they had an assigned, excuse me, chunk of time during the week. It might be one day a week, two days a week, um, and then they would just go and they would work that specific sport skill, so. Um, yeah, I, I don't know if you had anything to add to that, Mr. Johnson, but it seemed, I mean, when I'm looking at the attendance, it looked like kids were numerous, high numbers attending that, um, all summer long, so, which is, again, awesome. I know that kids want to work, kids want money, right? So sometimes they pick a job over doing the weight room and skills, but I felt like the attendance was really high considering that it's our first offering of it this year, so. Give it a go.
When, uh, my Ann and Megan, I think, were in high school, they did a sports specific training at the Y for track, and it's the two of them. And then your Megan won the state tournament. So I think those sorts of things that can be sports specific, that really hone in on a certain scale, whether it's shooting, basketball, or it could be blocking and tackling on the line. Those things with public program in general could also be as sports specific.
That was possible this year because of the change of W I R A main system. And they allow our coaches to contact other athletes all summer. And so we're able to put those classes in and have their, and have their coach, an assistant coach in the running. So, you know, your daughter Megan went to the pad to go to the Y, we could have ran it at St. Clair Central and had our own courses to do it. Where back then, that would have been the same. So that's, that's kind of what they've facilitated that in a lot of shootings.
And actually, um, another piece of our summer school is our band. Um, so Mr. Hallright takes in those two fifth graders and they do band lessons in the summer. We'll just serve at minus six. Um, but Mr. Hallright, or Mr. Conway has even asked about maybe the possibility of that being extended to the high schoolers next summer. So I'm open to conversation about it anyways, so.
Did you charge cheese for a move? Softly. Even the swim lessons and all just.
Yeah, we, we did our swimming. They worked really well with us, it's Carson, who's worked down at Ellsworth. Um, the first year I started, we had a, about a hundred and thirty kids register, but I think about two hundred and twelve showed up. And so, you know, it's hard because he arranges his schedule for all his instructors and then that charge, you know, they weren't all there. So he and I have worked something out where he has kind of a timeframe, like if kids drop ten days prior to the startup, you know, just something like that, so we don't get charged that. So, because that's hard, parents don't know what their summers look like, and when all the sun, it's like, that's too many lessons, shoot, we're going on a trip, you know, so.
How many teachers do we have teaching summer school that aren't in our district? We have any?
Just.
Just, just Mr. Foley?
Last year, I was able to get Mr. Palmer. I twisted his arm, but, you know.
So could you offer more if we had more teachers, or were there just have larger classes?
Yeah, it just limits them, you know, the option, like, there's not as many options for the kids sometimes, or, you know, if they're, they want to get into one. When they, they register, um, when it fills up with twenty-five kids, then that option goes away. So then they have limited choices until it leans down to.
It's like new grads, we promote that, like to River Falls?
Something where.
Or something like that? Just for their experience, I think they might want to, because they'd be certified then.
Getting a healthcare sooner. We've talked about just trying to recruit, you know, throw it out to all the teaching staff here. That's your fingers, and we will decide to, or, you know, I don't know. But yes, reaching out to the, we've got the system, it's starting to recall, so.
Thank you, Jackie.
Thanks, Jackie.
Okay, Dave, we have financial reports.
We are broke. So, as of November thirty of twenty twenty-five, our balance in our citizen state bank checking is four million, three hundred and sixty thousand, six hundred and ninety-seven dollars and forty cents. Money market is twelve thousand, one hundred and ninety-three dollars and sixty cents. One forty-six is sixty-one dollars and twenty-five cents. Suicide prevention, five thousand, four hundred and twenty-three dollars and seventy-two cents. Debt service is nine hundred, thirty-five dollars and thirty-four cents. Referendum balance is sixty-one thousand, one hundred and thirty-three dollars and thirty-four cents. Recall of four million, four hundred and forty thousand, five hundred and forty-four dollars and sixty-five cents.
All right, so I need a motion? Jeff made the motion, Brad second, is there any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Consideration of the consent agenda. Um, we've got eighty-two part-time modification requests for students to enroll and five full-time for twenty-five, twenty-six. We've got the athletic co-op agreement.
The boys.
Right, so we need a motion? You made the motion, Jeff second, is there any more discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Uh, administrative report, student enrollment update.
Uh, October count, one thousand, five hundred and fifty-one students and seats as compared to one thousand, five fifty-four, down three from, uh, last month. And, um, open enrollment, uh, you know, outstanding numbers in, uh, four hundred and twenty-two as opposed to four hundred and two last year at this time. Um, big change is the number out, um, and, uh, you know, that general, talk a little bit more about that too, with, with the approval of the levy in, in the budget. But, um, you know, at, uh, twelve thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars per student, you know, that, uh, did make a significant impact on the budget as well. The twenty-plus in, in, certainly helps. Um, charter school, uh, continues, uh, to grow at, at, at a nice, smooth rate. Um, and again, these numbers are two weeks old, so we're approaching two hundred and eighty, um, as of today. Um, but at, uh, at the time of this report, two hundred and sixty-six in our virtual charter school. Again, those are students that do not reside in our district, those are open enrolled in strictly. And then you could see kind of above that there. Do not reside in our district. Those are open enrolled in strictly. And then you could see kind of above that there. In the tan highlighted thing, um, those are our, our virtual full time, twenty nine are residents. And the seventy nine are, are uh, part time, our residents as well. And you can see, right? That's eighty two as of today, you just approved, uh, eighty two more. Um, so, or eighty two. Three more than when this report was written. So, um, again, this report is, is really good, just kind of monitored uh, every month, but. Um, uh, as we know, you see our, our cohorts, again, like I pointed out, ninety three in kindergarten. As opposed to we graduated one nineteen and, you know, we're, we're, yeah, one. You know, twenty five, one fifteen, one seventeen, one twenty seven, one oh five, a smaller junior class, but. You know, that trend will continue, I think, with the, the smaller numbers and kindergarten, first and second grade right now. Um. There was a time, I remember back in about two thousand thirteen, when we kind of first approached our first graduating class over a hundred, you know, and then that's. From a hundred to a hundred and forty for about the last ten years, it stayed that. But now again, um, those c- class size and cohorts are. Decreasing, which again, um, makes uh, our discussions about virtual. And open enrollment and, and being competitive and, and attracting uh, families and, and our different ways of digital marketing, et cetera, are even more important. Um, but, um, whatever, right? The students that we, we have, we're, we're, we're gonna, um, you know, give them the best education we can. Uh, no matter how many we have, so, but just to go to keep, keep an eye on these numbers, want to thank uh, all the ladies and. And all the schools and the district office again for putting this together. That third day, Friday count is, is very complicated, as you can imagine, one thousand. Five hundred and seventy nine students in all the unique living conditions and other schools and open enrollment in and out, that's just our. You know, then you got another four hundred, you know, uh, so it's, it's very complicated and, and it takes a lot of attention to detail and it's greatly appreciated. Any questions?
Thanks, Tim. We've got core agenda items. First is consideration of approval of adding girls head wrestling coach. We've got Brad. Those are here. You're on your own.
No.
Okay. Hey Brad, I missed the rec- recognition, so I gotta. You could pass out while this.
I would have two recognitions, both for golf. Uh, the first one. Congrats to Addison Foulful on being named first team all conference in the middle border. Way to represent S C C. Uh, second one, Zelly Moore. Congrats to Zelly Moore on being named second team all conference in the middle border. Way to represent S C C. That's it.
That worked out perfect.
Alright, so I'm not gonna bore you and read through this, because you can read through that. That was just my presentation. Um, luckily, we are. Girls wrestling is going extremely fast in the state of Wisconsin. Um, something that's been a long time coming. I think it's a great sport. Uh, we have had, or we'll have our inaugural middle school girls season this year. We've never had that before. Uh, we're running that before Christmas, so that way, just like the guys right now, the way middle school is set up. Guys can play basketball before Christmas break, after Christmas, they can wrestle, so they can still do both. Trial what they like, then get to high school, make your decision based off what they like more. Uh, the girls have been wrestling with the guys in the middle school and that's after Christmas break, obviously, like I just said. And they can miss girls basketball. So we've made the decision today to just for this year to pull the string, but. Middle school girls wrestling before Christmas, we start the season November fifth. Um, we have that taken care of right now. We have about fifteen girls signed up between eighth grade and eighth grade, which is awesome. About five or six of them, I just want to give them a try, see what it's like. Rest of them, I think are pretty at home. Uh, so that leads us to the high school side of it. We have at least five girls, up to eight girls right now, that I believe are going to be out. Couple of pretty high level ones. Uh, what I passed out, just to give you an idea, the second page, um, is our schedule this year. So the blue or the varsity events, the gray are the JV events, and then the pink, pinkish color are the female events. So because of the three different options that were happening. Uh, me and my coaching staff are flying around different parts of the state constantly. Uh, most of the girls events are on Friday nights. Guys events are on Saturdays. Uh, we have regional, sectional, state. Luckily, state is the same weekend, same spot, Cole Center, that's like. Obviously the ultimate goal. Uh, but with our girls program, like I said, a lot of Friday nights. And then, you know, waking up early next morning to go to the other side of the state with the guys program. So. Last year, we made it work pretty good. Uh, I'd say it was. Ten years ago, we were trying to get the third paid high school coach. Because of going to Jerry, uh, JV varsity and he's splitting up, being in the gym with eight mats. Trying to run around with our heads cut off. So adding the girls program with that same number of coaches has been sort of a struggle last year. Um, I'm a realist. I know that budgets are set, money's tight, totally get it. So what I'd like to propose this year is instead of going out and just adding a full new coach. Um, Mike Nielsen is designated as the girls' coach through the state. We have a designated girls' coach. So through the state of Wisconsin, he's designated at it, but is not paid as a girls' coach, head coach right now. He's just a varsity. So what I'd like to propose is just bumping this contract from an assistant to a head coach position, so that we can actually function. As a head coach, take on all the duties of the girls' team at need. And then next year, come back and look at getting that assistant coach back. So, you know, like I said, I'm a realist, understand, throwing around. I think that ten percent contract is pretty tight in the athletic budget right now, but. We would bump the one up, make him the head, and then next year revisit giving that assistant coach back again, so we can get back basically where we should be. Um, our numbers are pretty good, guys side, we'll probably have thirty plus this year. Uh, hopefully the girls side keeps growing and, you know, I'd love to be back here in a year or two, asking for a girls' assistant coach, which would be awesome.
So Brad for clarity, asking that Mike go from assistant boys in the pay scale to head. Which would be in, in par with your position, based on experience, so of course. Got it.
And then you'd be one less.
So we would be one less assistant coach this year. Um, like I said, I. We can make that part work. I have enough volunteers and then we get the stage of the game, trying to get, you know, a paid assistant coach. Can be a little tough because most of my volunteers, it's, I can be here two days a week, I can be here three days a week, and I have a great staff. Uh, but most of them have their jobs. It's taking a paid assistant job is tough. So that's why I said, you know, now that you revisit next year and that, that way we can break it into the budget for next year versus.
And what is that approximately?
Uh, I'd be, I think I, head girls coach would be a point. Because we don't, I don't know if we technically have a position on the girls' business yet.
But like, what is the assistant for? Like, so, you know. I was just thinking for cost wise.
You, I think approximately fifteen hundred dollars, right? Twenty five hundred, about four grand.
But along with all of the, you know, added responsibilities of putting the rosters.
Okay, so. Alright, so we do need a motion?
Yeah, for clarity, typically do, you know, the position, creating a position, right, one, and then. A separate one for approving the person, which can be done in, um, the agenda and call session.
Sure. So we made, made a motion to add girls head wrestling coach. So Dave, Dave made the motion to add girls head wrestling coach. Okay. Jeff, second, is there any discussion?
What kind of commitment is it, as far as like, you, you gave a number of how many girls are going out? What happens if they decline?
Well, I know we're gonna, we're gonna have four for sure. Yeah, there's four, I know for sure. So they're going to the tournament regardless.
Do you happen to know all the fifteen middle school girls? How many are in eighth grade?
Uh, four. And, you know, hopefully it's one of those things where they try it out now and then you start talking to your friends and. I know looking at St. Clair Falls, looking at Barron, we have pretty large girls' camps. It took, you know, like anything, we had to write one or two out and all of a sudden, it's, oh, let's give this a try. If you don't do anything else during the winter, so you'll try and make it fun, so. Hopefully by doing the girls' program in the middle school too, it.
We're just saying, how many come to, you know, the state tournament falls.
Yeah, and add to that, we do have, we are running this year our, we're doing the Western Wisconsin Girls Championship. February, which will be a whole tournament for us. So we have, we have about twenty two scores coming. For that, so it'll be all girls turned on a Friday night, first, first Friday in.
That's the February sixth one? Thank you, Brad.
Alright, so we had a motion by Dave, second by Jeff. Any more discussion? And all in favor? Alright, motion carries. Consideration of approval of extension of the Health Partners contract. And Jim?
So this is, um, one of the reasons why we're here tonight, just trying to explain. What's been going on with Health Partners and stuff. So basically what we want to do is extend our contract for one more year. And in return for extending it for a year, they give us that twelve percent rate cap. For the twenty twenty seven calendar year. And then we get the six point five percent renewal rate instead of the nine point three five. Any questions specifically with the contract?
Employees have been generally happy with the plan?
Yes, yeah. We have very few issues with Health Partners. And we've been with them for. It's been very good for us.
So that one hundred, like, so there's the one hundred percent or the seventy percent employee contribution, so.
That wasn't exactly correct.
Okay.
So the thirty five hundred, seven thousand deductible plan, the district does pay one hundred percent of that plan. And they want the two thousand.
For the whole family.
For the whole family, for both, yep. For the two thousand, four thousand plan, if you're a full time employee, then the district pays, I think it's ninety six. Point four percent or something.
Okay.
So it costs them for a family plan, I think it's about sixty five dollars a pay period, somewhere in that realm. If they want to have that lower deductible. There's also less of an HSA contribution for that lower plan. Whereas if they take the higher plan, the district contributes more to that HSA as well.
Yeah, seventy percent, nobody would.
Like, they're no one taking that.
Does it matter how many children that you have?
No. They're single or family, so even if it's just you and your spouse.
I think now they can cover kids up to ten, so. Right. Doesn't matter if you take a bus or your kids. So do we, is that sustainable? I mean, I'll just ask the question, like, if your increases that happen over the year. I know a lot of students go away from it, but that's a tough question on my own, but.
Yep, that's as, we gotta make tough budget decisions. That's one other thing that would be on the table for discussion.
You know, CSO is doing a cooperative program with districts from CSO, but. They tend to be smaller districts outside of the metro area because they don't have the network. So I think we get way better rates because we're in the twin cities network. I think Baldwin does something with, um, Malato, where they have a physician that they can go into.
We, we've considered and talked about trying to dip our toes in water, self-funded and. Just because of these, our experience ratings and our renewal hasn't been too bad and it's. The, the, the hidden costs are then all the admin, not all, but a majority of the administrative duties and dealing with claims and bills and stuff. Fall in this office, you have to add staff. So we, we just weren't a good place now for experience ratings, go through the roof and our renewals are twenty some percent or something, you know, then. Yeah, we can look at deductible, we can look at going partially self-funded. You know, nice with that is there's, you know, there's insurance on the insurance of a stop loss. You know, plan two, so you have a terrible year with some health, your staff health, you don't have to eat the whole thing, but. We just decided it's, yeah, um, because of the increased administrative costs and staffing in our experience rating, it's. We didn't need to at this time.
And we're not there for a year, but it gives us time to explore those things. And again, we're being proactive about. Expected enrollment, we need to start looking at doing business differently. And all of the sorts of things that, you know, we can plan for and then have options, make decisions.
Yeah.
Or doing this, which I think we should do. And it's kind, you know, you're not really allowed for the year.
Right.
Like, what, this year?
Yeah, that's the thing, our budgets.
Now, you know, too, as part of that, I know in the past, we had had to have conversations with like the teacher group. Because the premiums had gone more than what the district had handled to cover in any given year and kind of split out what. You know, maybe that HSA contribution gets used a little bit, or maybe they have to pay a portion of the. Premium for both plans, you know, I think that's something that we can still continue to look at on a year by year basis as well. But I don't think we're set in stone as far as that goes. You know, that portion of it.
Kind of one thing we do in our, my company is, is we do like a physical, annual physical, so we just had it three days ago. We bring in, um, nurses.
On site?
Yeah, onsite, and they take your blood and, uh, do your blood pressure and weight and type, and then they test for like. A couple hundred different things. So it's, it's really just getting ahead of things and, you know, make, make you aware. Sounds like our number is a little low on, like, people going in for their, their annuals or whatever, so it's just. Another way to kind of get ahead of the game is offer that.
You offer, you can't require advice, right?
Right.
But what is your?
Yeah.
Participation good?
It's usually around eighty five percent. So there, we do give some incentive to take it too, so. There's something to look at there, trying to get ahead of the health.
Yeah, it's, it's a big number. The, the total that we pay for premiums is.
Um, I think somewhere around.
Alright, so Jeff made the motion and Brad second. Any more discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Consideration of budget, tax levy, and mill rate for the twenty five, twenty six, just.
Alright, so you should have a package in front of the notes, um, with all the. The latest figures, so we definitely have some changes from the annual meeting. Um, just a few highlights on the top page and then on the second page, you go into a lot more detail and if you have any questions, you can. Go through that. So, um, the enrollment for our three year rolling average decreased from sixteen oh six last year. Down to fifteen seventy eight. That was due to the decrease in the students that we, that Tim was talking about earlier. And here I have, that we decreased by twenty two students.
I've got copies. Like, you're, I was just right around the corner.
So, um, after I presented this, I think we found out we had one more, um, student that we were able to add. Because I had a rebound, a decrease of twenty two and then four on the summer school for twenty six. But it doesn't affect our three year rolling average either, so I won't include this. So then the next thing was our revenue limit. Um, so the revenue limit is just shy of twenty one.
So then the next thing was our revenue limit, um, so the revenue limit is just shy of twenty-one million dollars. And that includes our energy efficiency levy for that debt that we paid yearly. It also includes three hundred and forty-five thousand dollars worth of declining enrollment exemption. So that's that one year exemption that we get when our, when our three-year rolling average decreases. So next year, that money will go away. Um, we also have added then our operational referendum of three hundred and seventy-five thousand. So that's the fourth, fourth year of our ten-year operational increase. Uh, we were also able to apply for a transfer of service for a couple of social health students. So that added about twenty-six thousand to our revenue limits. And everything that's been new in the last three years, I think it came into play about three years ago. Um, on the revenue limit worksheet lines ten age and ten I for the state like her vouchers program. And private school vouchers, we were able to add a hundred and eighty-three thousand for those programs to our revenue limit. But then we'd have to turn around and pay that money out, so it's, I'm gonna wash. So it increased our revenues, but it also increased our expenditure. So number three, at the annual meeting, we estimated an increase in our property values of five percent. Those actually came in at five point seven percent, so a little bit higher than what we had projected, so that was good. Um, and then our state aid came in about twenty thousand dollars less than what we have estimated at the end of the year. So I'm getting fairly close, um, to what we had last year too, but that's the same. So we go to the second page, I have the changes for five funds. And revenues and then expenditures, um, and I'm only listing the actual things that changed. So for our revenues and fund ten source two times change. From the five million nine hundred and sixty-three thousand to five million nine hundred and fifty-nine thousand, so very close. Um, some of the things, so we increased our open enrollment revenue by quite a bit, up to four point seven million. And that was due to, if you remember back to the annual meeting, they had posted that information kind of late. So we weren't able to incorporate the most recent numbers, we had estimated a three percent increase, and it was quite a bit more than that. So we increased that by about eight point two percent. Um, then we just kind of tweaked, well, our state aid is based on our October fifth equalization aid. Um, and then there were some other minor changes. The only one that was more significant was eight seventy long-term obligations, and that was that trifer release that we signed. Back in March that came, we had, I had to post it for this year, so it was posted on July first. And that's both the revenue and expense again, so I added it then to the revenue side, and then we'll see it on the expense side as well. A few changes in fund twenty for revenue, um, and thirty-nine changed slightly. Um, so that we keep our mill rate at that nine dollars and twenty-seven school thousand. I added a little more for interest in fund forty as well, about five hundred dollars, so that was minimal. Expenditures, we did have a couple things that changed more dramatically. One of them was function one hundred and thirty thousand vocational curriculum in fund ten. We changed our program for EL students, we always classified it as English as a second language. We now are considered a bilingual, bipolarial program. So that is a source one seventy-one instead of one thirty-three hundred. So I made that switch, so you can see our source one hundred and seventy thousand increased. From forty thousand up to two hundred and sixty thousand, and then it came off with one hundred and thirty thousand. The rest of the changes, or most of them besides, like the trifer lease and stuff, are due to, like. The health insurance premium changes, um, just new staff. Because I had the budget set for the annual meeting right at the beginning of July, and of course, we're still hiring people. And then we're estimating maybe what their benefits are gonna be, and so I went to and costed out all of that. So we could get that accurate in the budget. And then finally, if you look right at the bottom of that page under expenditures, four hundred and thirty thousand. That's where you're gonna see that open enrollment out that Tim was talking about earlier. That has increased pretty dramatically with the additional students flowing out. And that increase in, uh, amount, so that's ten thousand nine hundred and two. A few changes of the other cons as well. Um, again, to match what we're levying in for our fund thirty-nine debt. Then going ahead and paying that out as a prepayment, probably closer to the spring this year. Um, so that change starts on the. So you can see our recommendation in the middle of that page. And then we kind of have all of the backup recommendations. So we have our general aid worksheet, that's from the state that shows what it would be if you live in the premium. We have our revenue limit worksheet in yellow. That shows all of the three-year loan average, our declining enrollment exemption, what our, um. Revenue limit is with all of those additions that we talked about. So it's gonna be just over twelve point six million.
And how is your mill rate compared?
Mill rate is the same. We've been the same for the last three years, I think, and it was coming from a drop down.
A lot of hard work, thanks.
Yeah, so pink is just all of the equalization values. Blue are all of the new budget figures, and then right at the back is what was to the. So any specific questions?
So frustrating to me that vouchers, cause basically the state makes us pay for vouchers. And doesn't come out of state aid, we have to add it to the property tax. So our tax, our property taxpayers literally pay for vouchers within the district. Yeah, cause the state doesn't pay it.
Public dollars for private education.
Yeah, it's really frustrating, and it's masked, so nobody really understands it. I mean, three hundred thousand dollars in our district, think about Milwaukee, the masses, millions. So where, where can kids use vouchers in our area? Where do they go?
I don't even know.
Yeah.
For private school?
Yeah.
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 For the Hope Choice Program and private school vouchers, they must be two separate programs.
Is there like a qualification standard as far as like family income or?
Yeah, I think they have to be lower income and apply for the program.
Basically, the, you know, there's mood at Madison that we want competition in private schools. Compete for, for, for students, and so. I, I don't think it's all tied to.
Here you go, I would go with that question, I mean, think about, like, this sports in general, how to recruit.
Could be St. Pass, it could be.
After new, uh, doing SBIPs.
Nope. But it's frustrating.
So the motion is, right, the recommendation is on your third sheet.
Yeah.
I'm making a motion to approve that tax levy of twelve million six hundred and twenty-four dollars, five hundred. Well, million six hundred and twenty-four thousand, five hundred and forty-five dollars for the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-six school year. The mill rate of twenty-zero-zero-nine-two-zero-zero-two-one, to support the fund one budget expenditure of. Twenty-seven million, six hundred and sixty-one thousand, three hundred and thirty dollars, fund thirty budget expenditures. Six million, seven hundred and one thousand, six hundred and thirty-nine dollars, and fund eighty expenditures of four hundred thousand dollars.
Second.
So Dave made the motion, and Brad second. Any more discussion? Alright, all in favor? Opposed? Right, motion carries.
It's only gonna get tougher on me. I like your idea of not starting in May and June.
Yeah.
Starting right away and start thinking about. I think we really, literally have to change, think about how we restructure classroom. And we might not be able to afford it. All the teachers really have decline in the room.
We had our first meeting already, second meeting, two weeks, and yeah, we're having good discussions already, but. No, no low-hanging fruit really left, or great, easy ideas, they're gonna be tough. Yeah.
Okay, consideration of approval of district liability, property, and workers' compensation insurance.
So, as you may or may not know, you've been with EMC Insurance Company for many, many years. And every few years, we go out for quotes from other companies. Um, we were able to, to get one other quote this year from, um, it's a combination of a few different. Um, companies, CIC, Travelers, and Employers, um, insurance companies. So you can see, so EMC has an AMBAS rating of A excellent. Um, CIC has an AMBAS rating of B plus plus, which is considered good. Um, different commercial property limits is probably one of the biggest differences. Um, so CIC has said that we need to ensure our buildings up to one hundred percent of the value. And so that's how they came up with the one hundred and eighty-two point eight million dollars in the coverage, it's like a blanket coverage, so. Even if there's only damage at one building, they will cover up to that amount, but they want all of the property to be insured at one hundred percent. EMC has a little bit different philosophy, and that's why that's lower at the one fifty-three point five. They say that we only need to insure our buildings up to ninety percent, and then we have replacement value. So basically, we're not paying for coverage that we may never need in place. In most likelihood, we are not going to have incidents where all of our buildings will be destroyed at the same. So that's a big difference in the, in the coverage, but not, not as far as like. What happens in the end if we were to have a claim, if that makes sense. Um, definitely a difference in the premium there. So CIC also has a couple things that are, are included in their commercial property, like the inland union and stuff. Where EMC has a separate premium, it's a very small amount.
The pond by the, the pond by the S curve, or the pond by Hamlin's. Bus goes, I don't know.
So the other difference between the two policies is. So EMC, we have a two million dollar per occurrence, four million aggregate for general liability. And then we carry a six million umbrella that would be on top of that. So per year, we would actually have ten million dollars worth of coverage for general liability. Under CIC, we would have eight million.
Maybe it's two, but what's an umbrella cost? Cause they, they probably charge six thousand dollars more for eight million. What's our, what's the umbrella cost?
The umbrella is that eight thousand seven three six. So, yeah, so it's a little bit, and theirs is kind of included up above the air. So, so that six million umbrella would be used for general liability or for the automobile. If there was something that happened that would hit down, so we would have eight million coverage for automobile if we needed it. Um, our data cyber, we would have one million, CIC is, said it was between five hundred thousand and one million. I think it depends on what happens as to what the coverage would be. So our totals for just that portion, excluding the work comp, which is gonna be exactly equal. Outside of the dividend, um, is a little bit less to EMC. And then if you add the work comp, and EMC is giving us a twenty-five percent flat rate. So we are recommending that we continue with EMC insurance. Um, I think that's the best feeling, especially because of their, you know, better rating and everything. That could be important in the future.
And they think they're the work with.
Got a lot of claims. They've been wonderful.
I'm glad you go out, good, it keeps us very honest.
So we just need a motion unless anyone has more questions.
So the motion will be to. Use EMC, accept it.
Do we go through a vote here?
We go through Greater Insurance. So his name is Mike.
And he shops with so.
Yeah, yeah. He, well, actually, CIC is through a different period, that's, um, AMC Associates. And then EMC, or Mike, did try it through Greater Insurance, tried to get quotes. From other companies that he worked with as well, and he was not able to secure a unique.
Any interaction with CISO and who, different districts are using for insurance, how do we compare?
You haven't really gone that route.
We can certainly get that info very easily, survey.
When I was on the Girl Scout Board, we had a really good agent, guys really good premiums, and then he started representing every other. Girl Scout Council, cause he knew how to present the package for, you know, in this case, it'd be for a school district.
Right. And EMC does have, you know, they have a product that's geared specifically for school districts. And that's what we've been under, and I think they do insure the majority of districts in the state. I mean, there are others out there, obviously, but EMC has a, a good form around the market.
Alright, Brad made the motion, Jeff second. Is there any more discussion? Right, all in favor?
Right.
Opposed? Motion carries. Consideration of designating WASBA Annual Convention Delegate and Alternate. Alright, so Jeff. Will be the delegate. Do we need to name an alternate?
Yeah.
Okay, I like it. Alright, so I need a motion for that. Okay. Dave made the motion for Jeff to be the WASBA Annual Delegate and Derek the Alternate. And Nate made the second. Is there any more discussion? All in favor? Motion carries, uh, consideration of approval of the second reading of Board Rule four eleven. Student Discrimination Complaint Procedures.
No changes since last month, again, this. No changes since last month, again, this was born, you know, Barry with our policy resource guide, we got through all the policies, but then he's like, well, you, there's. This summer and there are some formal complaints filed, he's like, well, what's your, your rule saying, well, we didn't adopt any rules, so we're starting to do that.
Jeff made the motion. Brad second. Any more discussion? Alright, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carries, consideration of first reading board policy, six eighty-three asset management.
It's just a discussion.
So the only change with this policy is to increase the, the limit to from five thousand dollars to ten thousand dollars per item. The federal government is, has increased theirs from five thousand to ten thousand. And so I brought it up to our auditorium and said that that would be appropriate for us to do as well, so. Everything else on our stage is the same.
Okay, thank you. Okay, moving on to possible future agenda items, does anybody have anything? Upcoming, uh, important upcoming dates is October twenty-eighth. The WASBA Fall Regional Meeting at six P M at the Florin Gardens in Eau Claire. And then November nineteenth is a school board meeting here at seven P M.
Then we should talk about convention, the hotel blocks open up.
Oh.
Um, so again, it's January twenty-first, twenty-third. Um, you know.
I'm planning on going.
Yep, I'm planning on going, we're actually presenting, um, on the policy resource guide. They, WSB asked if we'd be interested in doing that. So yeah, the guy that makes the decisions, if you get picked to present or not. Asked us to do that, so, um, it's nice, so yeah.
So you and Kelly?
Yeah, Kelly's going to be joining me. Yep.
And someone from WASBA as well, or?
Yeah, yeah, his name escapes me right now, but yep.
We come home Friday.
Yes, correct, we come home Friday. Yep, usually midday. We could, early, yeah, yeah. You could Tuesday night or Wednesday morning early. Okay.
Okay, so.
I prefer to, so who's for sure? Me and you?
I'm not sure, no.
Just book three rooms, be safe. As Lance indicated, as he said in it, you know. Right there.
And I think Lance, that he's coaching every. With CBA.
He might want to just reach out to him.
Okay.
I mean, every, he's so, it's hard for his work, like he called me today at five and said he was getting on a plane. Last minute emergency to go to a work thing down in Florida, so it's.
Are you just for the hotel or for the actual log?
Right now.
But I mean, if I was down in Milwaukee and stayed on the, myself, and, and we were both hotel.
Got it, he'd be there for work, thank you.
And there isn't virtual, like you can't. Alright, so when's the deadline, Kelly? December fifteenth, but for the hotel. And it's on Monday, when, when is it though?
November third.
November third. I remember that. Okay. I think that's done with the upcoming dates and now we need to have a motion to convene to so session.
Move the Wisconsin State Statute eighteen nineteen oh five one C. Consideration, considering employment promotion conversation or performance evaluation data of any public employee. For which the government body has jurisdiction, jurisdiction or exercise of responsibility. Specifically approval of reservations, retirements and terminations and approvals of appointments and contract modifications.
Second.
So Jeff made the motion, Dave second. Roll call.
Right.
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 Okay.